Welcome, everyone, to the June 17th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. I would like to, at this time, and welcome those that are watching at home, also on TV. I would, at this time, like to call on Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Craig for the opening prayer, after which, if you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our dear heavenly Father, I come to you tonight asking for your blessings for the people that are in this room and also the people that are in their homes watching us. I am thankful that I am blessed to live in the United States of America. I am thankful for the men and women that have served and continue to serve that has made it possible for us to live in the freedom that all of us enjoy today. I thank you for the young folks that are with us tonight. I pray that you will continue to guide them as they become the future leaders in our community. I pray that you will watch over all of our children and keep them safe during their summer break. And, oh Lord, please be with us, each of us, tonight. Continue to guide us as we work to serve our community in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving along with the agenda that Adam C. is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
About Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilman Pierceall from the meeting tonight. He's on a business trip.
Second. Okay, all in favor, please. Thank you. Now, we've got a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second here, sir.
All right, sir. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you. Adam D.'s approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting of May the 20th. Approval?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, item E is Councilman Walter Timble to make a presentation under the Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee, recognition of Gaston Young Guns Shooting Sports, North Carolina Scholastic Clay Target Program State Championship, and North Carolina Skeet Shooting Association State Championship. We certainly are glad to have everyone here today.
We certainly are, Your Honor. If I could call Mayor Pro Tem Brenda Craig down to assist me because we proudly have an awful lot of these to give out. And what I'd like to do, to start off, I'd like to call up, we have two members of the committee, actually, two of our esteemed coaches, our skeet shooting coach, Don Wise, and assistant coach Steve Duncan of the Gaston Young Guns. If you fellows could come on up, please. The Gaston Young Guns won several team and individual awards last month in competition with dozens of other teams and youth across the state. On May 24th was the Scholastic Clay Target Program North Carolina Championship event. The shooters competed in three-person teams. The event had 63 shooters and 21 teams with competitors ranging from 19 years old. And I'm very happy to say that, overall, we did fantastic. You guys really rocked it. I have some of the awards for Mayor Pro Tem, and I'll call out your names if you could all come on up. Rookie Division, second place, Noah Liskam, Mitchell Lowe, Eric Newman. Intermediate Division, first place.
I'm Mitchell. You're Mitchell. Well, we want to make sure you get the right one. Congratulations, guys.
Intermediate Division, first place, Wyatt Malthus, Maximus Pavone, Katie Ezell.
Congratulations. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Junior Varsity Division, second place, Gracie Wolfher, Riley Dellinger, Rogan Smith. And Coach, we'll be able to get these to our participants, right? Thank you. Junior Varsity Division, sixth place, Dylan Parks, John Grayson, Matthew Fender. I mean, fair too well on that one.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Senior Varsity Division, second place, Maggie Wolfher, Colin Patruska, team captain, and Luke Smith. Come on up. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Way to go. Keep it up.
Great job, Phil.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Senior Varsity Division, fourth place, Nick Reed, Corey Duncan, Michaela White. Collegiate Division, first place, Jacob Turner, Sidney Duncan, and Gray Dellinger.
Councilman Gray is in rookie school in the Marine Corps. He just went.
Then we had, on the 25th of May, the North Carolina Skeet Shooting Association State Championships. Again, we did phenomenally well. And the sub-junior division, Riley Dellinger, first place, Wyatt Malthus, second place, In the junior division, Luke Smith, first place. And that concludes our awards. However, what I'd like to do is just to have our esteemed coaches come up and just say a few words about the Gaston Young Guns, their mission, and what exactly the competition consisted of. And it's my understanding that the competition was very intense, and as you can see from the pile of awards that we have here, we did real well.
Well, not two other words.
Oh, we do. Okay.
But in the collegiate.
Okay, I know. Oh, yes, I do have that. My mistake. Collegiate Division, Gray Dellinger, first place, and Sidney Duncan, second place. That was collegiate division. Again.
Grayson and Sidney. Yeah. They're passing.
Thank you. Coach?
Thank you very much. I appreciate you guys allowing the kids to come here before you today. I know it takes a lot out of your busy schedule, but we thank you. Our team's been together, just a real quick history, since 2007. We started off with four kids. Now we have more than 42, with 20-some-odd adult volunteers and coaches. So we're expanding every year. So a great, great program. We have a rimfire rifle team as well that are just getting stood up good and doing really well. So, big program, we're moving right along. Don Wise is our head skeet coach. He's retired fire chief from Lincoln County. He wants to say a few words to you.
And I won't take much of your time, Mayor, members of City Council, the manager and the clerk. I got to start off with this. For 25 years, I went to City Council meetings. This is the first one ever in a T-shirt. I assure you. I do want, just to take just a second, to tell you just how lucky these young athletes are to have the facility here in Gastonia, because I don't know whether you've ever heard the term hotspot or not, but there are hotspots in the world where athletes come from. Soccer players come from Sao Paulo, Brazil. Football linebackers come from central Pennsylvania. Middle infielders come from the Dominican Republic. And sub-junior and junior skeet athletes come from Gastonia, North Carolina. Now, why? Because they are special athletes, yes. They have special families. They have fairly good coaches. And I just want you to know that the biggest thing, though, is they have to have a place to practice their discipline. And absolutely, you are the ones that have made this happen, along with the Parks and Recreation Director Chuck Dellinger, who's in the back. And we appreciate all that all of you have done for the children. I will say this. I want you to look closely at the faces of the littlest ones, because our goal may change a little bit. We are rapidly trying to work into what we call the Elite Olympic Athlete Program. Steve and I just got back from two days in Colorado Springs, Colorado, at the Olympic Training Committee Center. And we studied nutrition, focus, relaxation, visualization, a new little trick called the quiet eye, and perfect practice makes perfect competitors. And so you may see these younger ones in the next few years on the Olympic podium. Again, I thank you for your support. The parents also thank you for your support. And Steve and I took just a minute out there. We would like to present the mayor, the city council, the manager, the clerk, the attorney, all a pin from USA Shooting, USA in Colorado Springs, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, coaches. Just a quick word on the Gaston Young Guns. Generally, the ages that are involved are 5th grade through 12th grade. And if anyone out there that's watching us this evening would like to get involved in the Gaston Young Guns, they can simply go on the website, gastonyoungguns.com, and on the left side, there's a drop-down that says Forms and Documents, which will tell them all that they need to know to get involved in this great program. And also, if anyone would like to donate to the Gaston Young Guns, it's a nonprofit 501(c)(3) charitable corporation, and they would certainly welcome any donations, both of time and also any monetary or equipment. And lastly, I was advised that one of the silent forces behind this has been Corporation Midway USA and the Midway Foundation. And they have a Scholastic Shooting Trust Fund that has, actually, Steve, tell us a little bit about, just real quickly, what Midway has done for the Gaston Young Guns.
Midway, over the last four years, has been a tremendous supporter of us with monetary donations, equipment donations, things of that nature, just everything that we need. They fill every need that we have. And we would not be able to have all these children together and do what we do if it wasn't for them. And they have a terrific program, and they're expanding it every year. Last year, they put $9 million into shooting sports. This year, if they stay on track with the way they're headed, they should be approaching $12 million into youth shooting sports, and they intend to do more every year. So just a great organization Larry and Brenda Potterfield have established.
Thank you, Coach. Mayor Pro Tem, any closing remarks? That's right. Thank you. We'll go on again. Congratulations to you all. Great shooting. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay.
We're going to have, the teams are going to come up, and we're going to shake all the council's hands. Thank you.
Right here. Chief, welcome.
Yes, sir, really. Thank you, sir. Right. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations to you. Thank you. Congratulations, young man. Pretty girls, lovely guys. Thank you. Thank you, all. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. Right. Thank you. Good to see you. Good to see you again. Congratulations, sir. Congratulations to you. Congratulations, young lady. Congratulations to you. You can't help it, you're a doctor, can you? Congratulations. It just comes out, doesn't it? Did reach. You know, in behalf of the council and certainly the mayor's office, we are certainly proud of you, and we're so glad you're here tonight. And, guys, we thank you for what y'all do, too, Steve and Don, and many others, I'm sure. Okay. Item F is a public expression, and there's no sign-up sheet, no one has signed in. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. We'll go to the regular agenda. The item six, insurance recommendations, Judy Smith, Assistant Director of Human Resources. Judy?
They're so mannerly. They are so mannerly.
I'm sure they're sad they don't have homework and just go tomorrow. Breaks their heart.
Thank you, though. Thank you.
And the property and liability insurance, first of all, I want to apologize, it didn't get to go before the Audit and Bids Committee. Unfortunately, we didn't get the renewals in time, so we're bringing the report before the full council. First thing we had was property and liability insurance. The coverage is currently with All Terrace, and it's actually written through Watson Insurance, a local broker. We recommend keeping that. The premium for 1314 was $591,659. The proposed rate for 1415 is actually a little less, it's $550,152, so it's a decrease of $41,507. Last year, the proposal from Watson did not include the fee for claims administration. The claims administration on the property and casualty claims is approximately $41,000, so we'll be able to use that. Watson, last year, paid 50% of the claims, so we'll be able to use that decrease to pay for those. So overall, we will have a net decrease in premiums of about $20,500. So staff recommended renewing that coverage as it is. And again, it's about a $20,500 decrease. So...
We want to break these out, Ash, separately, don't we? So we want to vote on these separately.
That'd probably be easier for the record, Mr. Mayor. All right.
Okay. Well, you've heard the recommendation of the staff. Judy, is, have questions?
Just one question. Judy, the $100,000 general liability, that is on automobiles, correct?
Yes, sir. That is the general liability, the automobile liability, the public officials and law enforcement, it's any liability line. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Second here, sir.
Discussion, any other? All in favor, raise your hand, please.
Okay.
Okay, next, please, Judy.
Yes, sir. The next line is the workers' compensation excess liability. The workers' compensation excess liability is currently with Safety National, and it's underwritten with A.J. Gallagher. The premium for 1314 is $101,61. Proposed rate for 1415 is $105,068. So this is an increase of approximately $4,907. They actually did give us proposals on two higher deductibles. Since the deductible is already $500,000, staff recommended keeping that the same and paying that increase of $4,907.
Questions?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second here, sir.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Okay, the next thing we have is the claims administrator. Currently, we have an agreement with the North Carolina League of Municipalities to handle the property and liability claims, as well as the workers' compensation claims. The current cost for the property and liability, as we mentioned earlier, is $41,000. The rate on that is not changing, so staff recommended keeping that one the same. And the second piece of that was the claims administration for the workers' compensation. For 1314, it's approximately $27,000 for the entire year. And the way they break that up is it's a 170 per med-only claim, or if it's a lost time claim, it's a thousand per claim. For the renewal on 1415, they are proposing 180 for med-only and 1,100 per lost time claim. That equates to an annual cost of approximately $30,800, which is an increase of $2,800. Staff has had a very good relationship with the league and recommends renewing that with the league and absorbing that $2,800 increase.
Question?
Right here. Judy, two questions. One, how many claims have they handled this year for us? Do you know, number?
Out of property and liability or workers' comp, or all together?
All together.
All together. I would have to look, probably close to 300.
Okay. Is there any other third-party administrators that handle this type of work?
Yes, sir.
Have we ever gone out to bid for them at all?
Yes, sir. We did, two years ago, I believe it was. I'd have to go back and look, but I believe it was two years ago when we sent it out for bid.
Okay, so we do it every so often? Is that how it works?
Yes, sir. Usually, with all the different lines, we look every three to four years to bid those out.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Motion here, sir.
All right, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? All righty.
Okay, the last one is the airport liability insurance. The current insurance is with Phoenix Aviation, which is underwritten through Wells Fargo. The premium for physical year 1314 is $6,100. There's no change in the proposed rate for physical year 1415, so staff recommends renewing with the current carrier.
Okay, questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion. All in favor? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Moving right along, item seven is a Transportation Committee report, which will be your number seven exhibit, and the presentation is by Chairman Walter Kimble.
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to thank the other members of the committee and the staff. I think that, Flip, I don't know for sure, but we may have broken a record there. I think what the meeting was, about three hours long. We had a number of salient topics and a couple that were filled in as a result of citizen involvement within the community. Starting off, item number one was a discussion of a request to close Second Avenue at Belvedere. And we heard testimony from a person that lived in the area, and also a petition, which is in your packet, that was put forth by... And we heard testimony from a person that lived in the area and also a petition, which is in your packet, that was put forth by a number of the folks in the residential area. From there, a number of different avenues, no pun intended, were looked at to try and ferret to the bottom of what the issues were as far as traffic, speeding, and in particular, truck traffic that was violating the law in an area where it's specifically no truck traffic. So I'd like to do, Flip, if you'd like to look at item number one and just go through some of the fact-finding that staff has done thus far, and also what we continue to do within our forty-five day deadline, which was established for a complete response.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of council, if you look at exhibit seven point one, I'll just go over the bulleted items quickly, is what the committee directed for staff to continue to research on. First was simply closing Second at Belvedere, Belvedere, looking at a previous Chestnut Street realignment project, that's an old Geo Bond project, making Cumberland a one-way westbound, reconfiguring the intersection itself at Belvedere and Second to possibly prohibit or eliminate, cut through traffic. The old standby, we've looked at before in other areas, of simply putting in speed humps. There is an existing traffic circle out there. That was originally built to the standard it is because of restricted right-of-way limitations. So possibly making more of a full-size traffic circle that would again calm some of the traffic there. Also, look at widening Cumberland, taking pedestrians into account. And then, as Mr. Kimble stated, look at enforcing the no trucks, through trucks in that area. But we presented that information for information purposes to the committee. They asked us to look at all those items plus any other things staff could come up with and report back to committee within forty-five days. Be happy to answer any questions.
Additionally, sir, I believe you're going to be meeting with the residents as this situation evolves to look at the different aspects of what would be available to them and what they feel would be most important to their community.
That is correct. Community meeting, yes, sir.
Now additionally, I believe you've also looked at, from our discussions, you've looked at the public safety impact, the school transportation impact, sanitation impact, and emergent traffic diversion from Franklin as some of the, as some of the issues that may impact the closure.
Correct, Councilman, and we've got different opinions from some of our different departments. The one in particular can create some rerouting and difficulty in some of our solid waste collection. That is certainly a concern. Other departments said no impact, so we're getting a mixed reviews from the departments that will have to continue to evaluate as well.
Lastly, I've also contacted our police chief, Stacy Conley, and requested at some point they form a partnership where we could have the, I believe it's the Highway Patrol Chief, has the, the Truck Enforcement and Way Unit could come in and to ensure that the truck traffic that is traveling in that area is within the guidelines of weight, safety, and other issues along those lines. Thank you.
Questions of Mr. Bonvedere, of the chairman?
We should vote on these individually.
Let me say, if I may, Flip, the, if I may, take just a second before we go move along.
Yes, sir.
Are you through with that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, we just get.
Item one?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
I've talked to many folks about this and I'm very familiar with it. And of course, they're, the neighborhood is very concerned for their children. And I think that, like a lot of other places that we can all name, there is a tremendous violation of city ordinance on, or speed limits. And there is, that's just very true, what they say about, I've been out there watching lately. Years ago, the fire department, of course, went there to get the, get to acre center, get out that way, but they don't have a fire department there anymore. And that, so that's, that's, that's a no, no-brainer there. I was involved with lowering the speed limit out there, but it is absolutely, this is a residential area, and it starts right here. It starts right there, because from there up, of course, it's the Wesleyan Church and the daycare. And so I'm gonna be watching, as mayor, very, very, speaking of the fire department, I'm gonna be watching very closely because I have, they have, as you can see, everyone, it looks like, has signed this petition. And this, this should be a road that goes to nowhere, in so many words. It's very dangerous. And I see why they, they wanna raise their family. I raised four children, they're right there. And so, and it was not always fun. People always in a hurry, so their, their major concern, folks, is, I mean, their major idea is, that's what Franklin is for. So, and they'll tell us that again. But I just wanted to say that how I felt about it.
And mayor, you are correct. I think the biggest thing we heard from the residents there was speeding. Lot of other smaller issues, but speeding was the main concern.
Sure. Okay, Your Honor? Yes, sir.
And just to complete this item, this item number, I did get a thank you letter from Terry Wally and Molly Douglas, thanking both the committee and the staff for all of the work we've done thus far, and that they were glad that they were able to have a voice in the process and that we could call on them if there's any other information that they may, we may need, or the staff may need from the community in this matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, item two?
Should we vote on item one?
No action.
No action, is it?
Okay.
Item number two is discussion of transit operations. This discussion came as, somewhat as a result of a number of citizens that voiced concerns regarding transit fares, the number, the dollar amounts of subsidies from the federal and state governments, the utilization of our public transportation, the size of our buses, and several other issues. From there, I spoke with Mr. Munn, Flip, and we included this in there to take a real good look at the whole parameter of our public transit system, since it seems a number of the folks have, in, both in our community and in the media, had questions about how it's being run. So what we'd like to do, again, Flip, I'd like to turn it over to you, as some of the things that we're going to be looking at as a committee to see if we can bring this a little bit more in line.
And mayor, council, again, if we have specific questions, we have other staff here that can hopefully address those as well. But this, again, was presented to the committee and they directed us to go back and look at more evaluations and research. But again, looking at your exhibit items, the action items were to research regulations related to fare increases, route modifications, standard for ridership counts, and overall transit system program changes. Look at the lifespan of buses. That actually, for the size bus we have, is about twelve years, plus or minus. Just as a matter of interest, we also talked about, well, what if we reduce bus size, again, trying to accommodate ridership more to the size of the bus? You can do that. You have to meet certain ADA requirements, but your lifespan of your buses also drops three to four years. So a lot of those different factors are out there that we, again, will report back to the committee at their next meeting. Just overall bus size alternatives, we talked about. How we do our passenger counts, we went over that at the committee. Transit alternatives, just getting outside the box. I know Councilman Curlin and Councilwoman Craig may remember some of the other ideas that were presented long ago. One came up in the committee meeting. It was called green tea, an acronym for a different way of looking at transit-type service. But just kind of get out of the box, see what's out there on a national basis. Are there better ways to be more efficient, to save more money and still provide that service? Just look at everything out there. Also tied in, what is our relationship to the county's access system? And then, as I just mentioned, overall efficiency. So we are working on some of those directives now, and the committee had asked that we had, that we report back to them within sixty days for a follow-up on that. And that was presented, again, to the committee for information purposes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just have one thing to mention, Flip. We have about two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand riders, according to our surveys. And the amount of money that we spent last year out of the general fund was five-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that was in two thousand and thirteen. When you take the passengers and you divide it into that number, you get a figure of a dollar ninety-eight. I know currently that passengers are paying a dollar, but it is costing us a dollar ninety-eight from the general fund. The other thing is, when you project what our budget's gonna increase to, which is six-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand dollars, and you divide the two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand passengers into that, you get a fee of two dollars and nine cents. So it's increasing, and we haven't done anything with the fare increase at all. Right now, it's an increase of eleven cents per rider, if ridership stays at two ninety-eight.
Councilman, you are correct. We have not increased the fares in several years. That's one of the items the committee asked us to look into that we'll bring back to the committee. We've also surveyed other cities. We can kind of give an average of what other cities are doing, but we can present that information. And it's certainly within council's authority to modify our rates. We have to go through a series of public hearings to notify our public with, per federal standards, but council can set those fare costs.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Flip, just one more issue that came up, and just for clarity and transparency, can you just, you or Ms. Key, just go over how we count our riders?
Certainly all.
Because that's also something that was not real clear to a number of the folks that actually had attended our meeting from the general public, and some of those may also be viewing this telecast tonight.
Correct. I'll let Ms. Key explain that, but I will say before that is, is the way we count passengers is, is the standard throughout the country of how all the other transit systems do that, but I'll let her explain that.
Thank you.
Essentially, the way we count is by fare and by ticket. We sell a regular ticket, we sell elderly and handicap ticket, and fare, corresponding fare. That ticket that we sell, or the fare that we take on, is to, for that individual to reach their destination. They may have to change buses to reach their destination. That's called a transfer. When they have to transfer to another bus, we do, we count them getting on that bus, but we do not charge them. So there seems to be a discrepancy that we should not charge for the transfer. But our primary interest is, we wanna know who's getting on these buses and how many people are getting on these buses, and how are the buses being used? And if we don't count them, then we don't, we wouldn't know that information.
Okay, ma'am, so just for a little bit of clarity, if someone had to do two transfers, how many times would they be counted?
They couldn't do two transfers. Can only do one.
Okay, and they would be counted how many times?
One transfer would be once.
Okay.
On the new bus.
Thank you.
Of course, if you wanna count the return trip, then they're gonna be counted again, but that's just how it works. They get back to their destination.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any others? Thank you both.
Item number three was a traffic calming program, Floyd Lane and South Street speed hump request. The staff had received a request from residents of Floyd Lane and South Street for speed calming devices, specifically speed humps. Under our new evaluation criteria, that was put in place. The streets were evaluated, there were traffic counts and speed studies performed in accordance with the new, the city's traffic calming program study. The committee voted unanimously three-zero to recommend the installation of speed humps on South, South Street, and that a new speed study be performed on Floyd Lane, and that would be to see if the speed bumps be installed if the speeds are not below the posted limit. Go ahead.
Okay, now that would require a motion. Okay.
I make the motion.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you, sir. Item four?
That was a discussion of the proposed multimodal transportation center. We looked at a number of different issues surrounding this, from where it would be located and the displacement of any businesses that are in that area, loss of tax revenue, moving those businesses to a different location, as well as some of the other alternatives that we may have in what down the road this multimodal system could both cost and also could do for our residents. And, Flip, you have a number, we voted unanimously to direct the staff to continue evaluations and research of the overall project. And then, Flip, if you could go into some of the different things that we've done thus far, and I think you may have even done some things that aren't even, that are not updated on here yet.
Certainly, mayor and council, again, the multimodal center goes back several years, and maybe to first start it off, is, is a lot of people think it's just simply a new bus station, but it's much more than that. It's bringing together all the different, either existing or potential modes of transportation we may have in the future to one facility, again, to hopefully be more efficient and to provide those type of services to our citizens. Yes, it could be transit or some spinoff that we talked about earlier. It's, it's a park-and-ride lot. It's the eighty-five X lot. It could be light rail to transit. It could be the private, the Greyhounds, the Trailways of the world. It could be the Amtrak, again, located within one facility. And the history of this, it goes back, we've done numerous studies, we've done site locations, site location studies. This was, if you remember, it was actually on one of our council work sessions early in the year, but we had so many items, we didn't get to it at that point in time. So we brought it back to committee again to seek some direction from council. If this is something we wanna move forward with, we would have to work towards securing funding for it. Typically, that is funded eighty percent federal, ten percent state, ten percent local. But that, that's kind of where we are with it. We've done a portion of the preliminary environmental work, which, again, is a federal requirement. We've done some cost estimates, we've done some elevations, again, to give council an idea as if this is a project you would like to move forward with. Here are the details, here are the facts, and then it just becomes a matter of if we pursue it and whether or not we can secure funding for it. So we have a lot of those elevations in your packet tonight. We have the large versions of those, if you'd like to put them out on TV this evening. But the committee did direct staff to continue to evaluate certain things. They asked us about alternative sites. There were several representatives from the general public at the committee meeting who had some good input as well, but we're taking that back and will continue to evaluate and bring that back to committee. But just to go over some of the bulleted items that the committee directed is to query stakeholders, such as Greyhound or Trailways, as to what interest, whether financial or otherwise, they could have in such a multimodal facility. Look at, there's a couple sites up on Long Avenue, specifically two of the older mills being torn down that join the Norfolk Southern tracks. They do part before that from the old P and N tracks, but they do butt up to the current Norfolk Southern tracks to research what's called the mega bus concept. I think Councilman Gallagher had brought that up. That's a Washington to Atlanta, cheap fare, straight bus ride, but look into that.
It's real cheap.
Real cheap. Again, one of, one of the assets we have in Gastonia is our proximity to Charlotte Douglas Airport. What opportunities may be there? That, that could be a huge connection point. And again, not limited to that, but again, just to start the dialogue with committee and full council, again, to whether, whether or not to move this project forward and allow some time to do that and make a good decision whether or not to move forward. Again, we have staff here, we've got the big drawings. Mr. Chairman, if you'd like those, or mayor, to put those up, be glad to, or in lieu of answering any questions.
I would defer to you, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to put those up.
I think we can, we'll start with the questions, if that's okay. Any questions of, y'all want them to go up?
That's fine. Just maybe an overview, Flip, just the one or two would be fine.
Okay.
And while he's doing that, I just wanted to underscore also, the committee felt strongly that- that engaging the interest from some of these outside, potential outside stakeholders, that we, I think that it was, we want to move away from, if we build it, they will come, to a concept of them being, if they have an interest, being stakeholders from the beginning, so that we have entities that are interested from the time that the, theoretically, the center would open, not opening the center and then hoping somebody would come there.
Mayor, members of council, I hope the camera picked this up, but this, this is a simple site plan, maybe a little, little difficult for our viewers, but Franklin Boulevard across the bottom of the page, Broad Street, to the, on the left of the page, this is the northeast corner of that intersection. But again, just a representative version, in order to put some order of magnitude cost to what we're doing, we had to at least get on paper some ideas. But again, you can see the multimodal center itself, back here in the back, adjoining the tracks. For example, a park and ride lot here, and then just general customer parking, service facility, you can have taxis there. Again, just a general idea of the concept of what that could include as such a facility.
That's number 28 on our exhibit, by the way.
Yes, and these, these drawings are in your agenda as well. This is just, again, a concept of what the facility itself could be. It's really very simple. It's weighty areas, it's offices, it's restroom facilities, baggage areas, again, just to accommodate the type of uses we might envision at that.
That's exhibit 33.
And then simply from a architect's rendering viewpoint, again, trying to tie down some, some cost and what it may look like. And what we ask the architect to do on these preliminary studies is, is look at something that could be expanded in the future, so we don't limit our options if we would decide to move forward with it. So, again, just an artist's concept, but again, tries to pin it down, put some cost on it.
Thank you. Questions? Yes, sir.
Flip, one of the questions is, if this goes where you're thinking about putting it over by the cement factory, we're going to need cost on how much it would be to purchase that property, how much the property tax that the city would lose, and how much it would cost to move that cement factory, that firm itself, to where it wanted to go.
Councilman, you, you are correct. The, the cost you see in your agenda, those costs have been built in, at least, again, from an estimate standpoint, and we would have to follow the federal guidelines on how that process would take place. But yes, all that would have to be in the cost.
Now, has there been a study, environmental study, on that property? And has it been attained to be suitable?
We, we have done just enough of the environmental studies. Again, we did not want to put a lot of money into this project until we had further direction from council. We have done what I will call preliminary environmental. We do not feel there are any major problems that have come to light, but we have also, in saying that, have not completed the environmental study to the extent that the federal government would accept it yet. But we don't feel there's any major problems, but we've done just enough to try to identify something that may jump out and cause us some significant concern.
But mainly, this is going to be a bus station. I mean, that's, because we don't have any train going to Charlotte.
I, I think a, the current transit service or portion thereof would be a part of it. Again, I use the 85X as an example, the park and ride lot in conjunction with that could be a major part of it. Our paratransit vans, the county access vans, you would have an opportunity to possibly combine operations. So, I, I do feel it is more than simply a bus station, but that would be a, a significant component of it. Yes, sir.
And they are currently all doing that at the current Bradley Station downtown Gastonia?
We, we certainly do the, the transit piece of it. That is our transit facility. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Flip, is there any way we can get some information, whether it be through the Gaston Economic Development folks or whatever, that might give some economic impact to this?
Be glad to see if we can find some information.
In terms of not only, you know, jobs created permanently, but jobs created temporarily in a construction phase. And then, you know, when you look at the, the different circumstances that occurred over in Charlotte with the Lynx Blue Line and things like that, 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 I know it had an impact on the local property values and development of both retail and commercial and residential around those Lynx stations. And I know it's not exactly apples to apples, but you're starting somewhere with this, and I didn't know if there was a way that we could possibly get some feel for that. Because I do think, you know, we look at this, you know, in its basic form as being a multimodal transportation facility, but in a bigger way, it also expands our downtown, it also gives opportunity for future retail and commercial businesses, as this being a hub around which those would grow.
We'd be glad to research that, see what we can find.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. One last item, Flip, and, and just again, for the folks that were not at our committee meeting, you're also going to be looking at the status of where the rail to Charlotte Airport, where that stands right now. My understanding was that there's some back and forth between some of the different entities there, and we want to get an update on that to see where it stands, for sure.
Correct. Yes, sir. That's part of that item that talks about Charlotte Douglas Airport. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Any other questions of, okay, sir. Thank you. Item next.
Item number five is the NC DOT SPOT, roadway sidewalk scoring ratings. The staff presented an update to the committee regarding the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO preliminary score analysis with regard to Gastonia's project rankings. We voted 3-0 to accept the staff's presentation on this for informational purposes, and I believe, Mr. Graham, you're going to present that. We also have it in our, in our booklet, and I thought what was real good was that the Cox Road Initiative of widening the roadway scored fairly high, and we can go into that. That's something I had reported back a number of months ago. I had visited the site several times with both some members of the council here, and also Representative Baumgartner, and we saw the need both to expand that, and also with the ease that that could be completed. So, Mr. Graham, turn that over to you.
Good evening. So, what we've got on the Elmo, I presented a PowerPoint presentation to the committee showing all of the state's strategic transportation investment projects that we had for the Gaston Cleveland Lincoln MPO. On the Elmo, it, it just starts with our, our MPOs, 10 top statewide tier projects. Of all of the projects that were submitted in the state of North Carolina, highway, aviation, bike pad, all modes of transportation, our MPO submitted a project that ranked the third highest out of all projects submitted in, in the entire state. That project is an I-85 interchange improvement. It's shown here in red. It is to add one lane for each off-ramp at the Cox Road, I-85 interchange, and that is because of all of the heavy congestion in the Cox Road Franklin Square area. But on this project, because of safety, traffic congestion, and everything else, it, it had a score of 83.41, and it will definitely be funded. Along with that, other major projects in our area, our three-county MPO area, include the widening of I-85. It did score high enough to receive partial funding, not full funding, from the NC 273 interchange in Belmont, all the way to the US 321 interchange in the center of Gastonia. That is the first phase of the I-85 widening project. The second phase would pick up from US 321 and head further west to US 2974. And then, we have a third and final phase of the I-85 widening from US 2974 to the state line. But on other major projects, those were the three phases. We had the Shelby bypass in Cleveland County, and then a major interchange improvement. Those were the major statewide projects that we had here in Gaston. Regional projects, regional tier. The funding, based on the new legislature, legislation that was approved by our state legislature last year, it required three separate different, or different tiers of funding. There was a statewide tier, a regional tier, and a divisional tier. The regional tier funding covers two separate or two different regions within the state. The state splits, NC DOT splits the state up into 14 different divisions, and in order to comprise one region, it combines two separate divisions. We are combined with Division 11, and we are in Division 12. So, that is the basis of our regional tier funding and regional tier projects that will compete against each other. We have a major project in Lincoln, Lincoln County, NC 73. It goes from old NC 16 all the way over across the Catawba River into Mecklenburg County. That is a major, major project, pretty expensive project, but it did receive a, a high score. The 279 Lower Dallas Highway, we had both an intersection improvement for the Dallas, for the 279 highway project. It did score well. Both the intersection improvement project by itself, I think there's a Old Eckards Drugstore there on the corner, it's very heavily congested there. That project scored high enough to receive funding. But also the widening of New Hope, where it, it kind of bottlenecks now, just past the Food Lion, as you head north towards Dallas. That bottlenecked area will be widened all the way up to the Dallas Stanley Highway Interchange. So, that did score high enough. You can see quickly Gastonia. Gastonia had other projects throughout. We did really well, as far as an area or our MPO's size and, and amount of projects that we submitted. But we basically informed the committee of all of the projects that we had that were funded and did score well enough. Let's see. Divisional tier, these are the ones that we will compete within our division for funding. Our division covers, we compete with Hickory, Iredell County, and plus our three, three counties within our own division. As you can see them, the highest ranked project is a Linkenton Intelligent Improvement, Transportation Improvement Project, ITS, is just to improve safety. NC 273, at Tuckaseeji Road and Rose Street, to construct sidewalks. We've got a lot of bike pad projects that ranked really high statewide for our MPO area. Gastonia had a large number of those due to the adoption of our pedestrian plan recently. We received a large number of competitive projects that you guys approved, that plan and adopted, and that's one of the reasons why our projects scored so high. Airport project, other projects here in Gastonia, the Cox Road Number Five, US 2974 at East Franklin. We have the Cox Road intersection that we were talking about, and the sidewalks. But on, other than that, I mean, we did really well. If you guys wanted to ask about a specific project, based on what we had submitted, or how well, or whether you think it would receive funding, I think all of our higher scoring projects will definitely be funded, including I-85, but not the second phase. I guess it is phased, but we did really well.
Questions? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Graham, number three, the I-85 ramp?
Yes, ma'am.
It's going to get funded. I, I hear what you say on that. Once it's funded, when will, I mean, when do you think it's going to be funded, in what year? And then, when would it start construction?
Well, all of these projects are, the current process or program is in place to be added to a new state transportation improvement program, or STIP, that will be adopted in 2015, probably July 1st of 2015. And I would take it immediately following that property or land acquisition, and environmental studies, if necessary, would immediately begin. I would say for that particular project, 2016, and probably be open and finished in 2017.
Okay. All right. Well, that, I mean, you know, when, when we hear that it's funded, then, that the automatic concept is, okay, it's going to get started.
Right.
But that's why I wanted to clarify that. So, you're not looking for that, those ramps to have any additional traffic on them until 2017, maybe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Interchange 321. It's ranked 32, and as Councilwoman Pro Tem Craig said, it's, you know, scored 60.99. I guess that's high, and it's got $20 million allocated for it.
Correct.
Is this project going to start prior to I-85 being widened, or is it slated to go forward, or are they going to put it up and then tear it down? I just want them to build a ramp southbound on I-85 going northbound on 321. That way, it'll alleviate a lot of traffic. If they can do that, that would be great.
Explain.
Well, for your questions, very good question, and we as staff, we've been asking NC DOT since we've been working with this STI process and ranking process for the past year, year and a half. We would like for the projects to go or be constructed concurrently. However, the I-85 321 interchange is much further ahead, much further along. There's already been funding allocated or designated for it. The environmental study is almost complete, so it'll probably get started as soon as possible once we finish up the environmental study. So, I would think that it could be finished by, in 2016. That's one. The only problem that I have, I'm still having, I think I've talked, spoken with the manager many, on many occasions, would not, don't like the, the current design that they have for the I-85 321 interchange. Don't think that it would work well with the widening of I-85. Definitely would not like the idea of NC DOT constructing the interchange improvement, and with the widening project having to rip out the interchange improvement and then redo it. Those are the issues that we are going to be working with NC DOT to discuss and work out, but the two projects are not together at all at the present time.
Okay. Another question. Another question I have is, I haven't seen it on here. If we had a road that went by Chuck E. Cheese's and Ruby Tuesday, went past Buffalo Wild Wings, and through Home Depot and Toys R Us into that shopping center there, it would alleviate some of the traffic from Franklin Boulevard. It would cost about a half million dollars. I mean, is that something that can be listed or asked for?
It is a local project on our local metropolitan transportation plan. However, it did not rank high enough to get ranked statewide for funding consideration, but it is a project that we have. We will probably continue to submit it in the future. Hopefully, we'll tweak it a little, maybe get some more points out of it, and maybe it can be funded in the future. We also started- We also started, I guess, working with the city engineer. We've interviewed a couple of consulting firms to do an overall transportation impact assessment, study of the entire Franklin Square area, including the Cox Road Interchange and all of those phases of Franklin Square. And that project would be one of the major, hopefully one of the major ones that would come out of such a study. So we are looking at that.
The last thing is just a statement, Hank. From what I've read in the paper and all, there are 16 major project, road projects that are going to be funded by the state. And I know there's a new scoring system out and we're supposed to rely on the scoring system. But out of those 16 major projects that are going to be done, 12 of them are going to be in the Raleigh area. The other four are going to be throughout, throughout North Carolina. So I don't know how well the scoring system's working, but I just want to throw that out there. Thank you, sir.
All right, you want? Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Item number six, that's the Modena Sidewalk Construction. Staff provided an update on the Modena Sidewalk Project. A new bus shelter has been installed on Harrison. And construction plans are nearing completion for a new section of sidewalk from Harrison to I-85. Potential funding for this is being pursued through the FTA funds. And the staff is also working towards the installation of a sidewalk segment from East Park Avenue going north about 600 feet. And as an aside, the funding is already identified in the current city budget for this. Additionally, a remaining segment of the sidewalk near the old P&amp;N Railroad right of way has several construction challenges and will be a future phase as engineering details and funding sources are identified at a later time. I, I think, I know that I attended a number of, several meetings, Neighborhood Watch Meetings and other community meetings with Mayor Pro Tem Craig on getting some sidewalks there. The, the, the community there really puts a heavy weight on getting some, some safe travel through there, given the amount of cars that go up that way towards I-85. And really there's no, there's no, in some areas, there's no shoulder to speak of and it's, it's somewhat dangerous. So I'm glad that we're moving forward with that. Flip, any other comments?
We'll be happy to answer any questions. It was provided as an update.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Abida?
All right.
Okay, the last item was number seven, and that was another matter. There was a couple of issues that were brought up. First, they're going to be, the staff is going to be conducting a ridership survey on the I-85 Express CATS line to see if a morning-evening route, if there's a, there's buy-in and there's, there's need for a midday route. And I've had some folks that take the bus that would kind of like to see a midday one. I, I don't know how many overall really feel that way, but I think that's what we're going to ferret out in some of the study, the study that you do.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Just survey of the ridership, see if the demand is there. Then we, either by adding an additional route, we can get cost for that. We've got preliminary cost or possibly taking one of the existing morning or evening routes and switching it to a midday, which would minimize those additional costs.
That's an excellent idea. Thank you.
The, the second, and I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Curlin. He, he brought to, to fruition something that is really, it is a tremendous traffic pedestrian and potentially injury issue, that people must walk directly on Franklin Boulevard at the DuHart Creek where there's no sidewalk. Counsel?
Just that, it was brought to my attention when Morgan Shoes opened. I had a chance to chat with Mr. Doug Morgan and he said that they have an opportunity. They cut across the street to go to Cookout often as employees and folks at the shoe store. And they observe a lot of pedestrian traffic on that north side of the street. And because of the creek there and because of the, you know, the fact that there's really no shoulder there and there's the creek and there is the, the guardrail there, that these people are actually walking out in the street to traverse that, that particular part of roadway. So hopefully as we go forward and, and look at opportunities there, we'll address that issue and hopefully in a timely fashion, just because that's a very dangerous situation.
Mayor and council, if I can just add to that, that is one of the projects on the, the list we previously looked at with Hank.
Also, I would imagine, Flip, that's going to be something that our traffic analyst that's doing that whole area from Franklin Square over to Cox is going to be looking at as well is the safe, the safe movement of pedestrian traffic through there.
Yes, sir, you are correct.
Thank you.
Flip, I have one thing. On item number two, discussion of transport, transit operations for the buses. I wanted to find out if they could do some type of overview seeing about how to have the buses transfer passengers within, instead of coming back to Bradley Station all the time to transfer from one bus to another, can they do it out within the community itself where the buses' schedules can interlock somehow, intermeet? Similar to what they do over at, out on the west side where the buses meet?
Yes, sir, that was actually part of the Transportation Committee discussion. I was looking in the report, it didn't jump out at me, but that was one of the action items to look at.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you, Your Honor. That concludes, and you can understand why the, the meeting was three hours now.
Yeah.
Thank you for all, thank you to the staff. And we do, we did set some deadlines for a number of the fact-finding areas here and we will be reporting that back to the whole council when they become available. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item eight is the Facilities Management Committee Report. And there's an addendum that our place, and between it and the agenda, Ms. Craig, who is chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And the Facilities Management Committee meeting was not that long as the Transportation Committee meeting. Because it, so this will be probably, we didn't set any records, in other words. But we did meet on June the 11th at 5:30. And Myra Nichols is here with us tonight so that if there's any specific questions, then I'm sure that Myra can certainly answer those. Item number one, we have an offer to purchase 299 North Broad Street. Mr. Wilson has offered the city $27,000. The property's tax value is 25,100. The offer is subject to the upset bid process. The property is presently used for staging the downtown July 4th fireworks. If the property is sold, another location for fireworks would have to be determined and/or the fireworks would need to be scaled back. There was some discussion on that. But overall, the committee voted 2-1 to approve the property sale using the upset bid process. And have we had any upset bid, Myra? Has it gone, has it even gone out?
Because I...
Okay, okay. And so that, the committee directed staff to research other locations for the fireworks and to report at our July 15th meeting as to any other properties that we can do the fireworks on. Make that in a form of a motion to accept the bid of $27,000 for 299 North Broad Street with the, subject to the upset bid process.
Motion and a second, discussion. All right, go ahead, Dr. Curlin.
I was just going to say, I was, I was the dissenting vote in the committee's decision there. And the reason was, was because I just felt, I, I wanted to get more information about the alternatives for the fireworks sites prior to making a final decision on this, on this issue. I didn't want to get, I guess, pigeonholed into something before we really researched the whole thing. So it was just more of a procedural thing. I think in concept, I think it's great when we can return any property back to the tax rolls. And it seems like Mr. Wilson has got a good proposal to put an office building on the property. So I didn't have a problem with that either. I just felt that, you know, I'd just like to get the details on where we are going to reposition those fireworks before we made a final decision.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher?
I just wanted to ask what they were going to build there. Obviously, it's going to be an office building?
Office building, mhm. A building that would hold a multiple individual offices with a common space and using the same secretary or receptionist.
Yeah, I've been in that.
So it does put it back on the tax base. And, and two, this, this vote that was made at the council, I mean, at the committee meeting, it would not affect this year's fireworks whatsoever. So it, it would affect next year's.
I don't know if your, your committee discussed this or not, but you know, from, from the naked eye, just looking at Exhibit 810, I, I never knew that was, well, I knew it was ours. I never thought of it as being developed. Is, has any, I assume that y'all way ahead of me, that, that little tiny thing right there that you've got setbacks and you've got parking and it goes down to nothing. But that's big enough, I mean, I know it's an acre and a half, but look at the way that it's drawn. And can you put an office on that?
Yes, would there, there?
Yeah, I've seen that, but that's not, but that's not on a piece of property like this one, is the reason.
Okay.
I know where there's another one just like it. And it goes just like that, and that counts to nothing. You can't, setbacks, et cetera.
We talked about the zoning of it and everything.
Right, Mr. Wilson has met with Drew Pearson about his needs for the building.
So, and, and it, it met its qualifications, so to speak.
But it's a, it's a very tight site. And anytime you have a piece of property that's triangular in shape, you know, your usage of it is challenged.
Exactly what I'm saying. I got an old one, just like that.
Okay.
Like a train, you know, okay. Well, you know, across the street, we've spent a lot of money. The taxpayers spend a lot of money and, and over the police department. It's a beautiful building and, and of course, the facilities, I mean, the gardening all out front, the monument and the park, et cetera. And I just, when I first saw this, I said, is it going to be hanging off over the railroad or built over? What is going on? But if Drew says it beats the qualifications, I guess, I mean, the city's...
I mean, that did come up. There was some conversation about the zoning and that it did meet the city ordinance the way that, I mean, Drew, they had had some conversations with Drew and that it did meet the city ordinance.
Well, you take on Exhibit 811, the only reason I, I bring this up is, is that if I look at it long enough, I could, I could recognize it. But I do reckon, of course, it's got his name on there. Number one is Roy Short's building down there. That's a wrecked, that's a perfect, that's a box lot. And so that's no comparison. But I guess it's, this is to compare with the, the building and not the lot. But that, and I'm not talking about the building because I don't know what the building looks like. But that just looks so tiny. But if, if it meets, you know, you've got to have certain parking spaces. Maybe this is just reduced in size, let's just say that.
Yep.
And I'll just add, remember, it was just a little more than a year ago that we sold the building for the subway. And they were going to actually build a subway there specifically. Well, things changed and they actually didn't. So now there's an insurance office and there's something else there. So this is the idea that Mr. Wilson has, but ultimately whatever the zoning allows is what he can, can build there. And so that, that is, and that's what he'll be working with. And he has had conversations with Drew, so he does understand the limitations of the problem.
I guess it was discussed pretty well, and I'm not drilling the committee, but the $25,000, an acre and a half there, $25,000 appraisal. Y'all look at that, I mean, y'all know who appraised it and all that? Look it over or just?
I don't know who, no, I'm not, I don't know who did that. Myra, can you answer that?
We only used the tax value, we have not had it appraised.
Did I read that? I'm sorry, I won't take up the time, but I, but I, it's here. Okay. I'll have to study some more. Okay, there's a, any other discussion? It's a motion and a second. Okay. All in favor? One, two, three, all opposed? Okay. We'll stop at three and two. We'll see. It made all the difference in the world when, when they said it meets the qualifications for parking, so.
Well, that, that was part of the conversation in the committee, is that we did, we did ask that specifically.
I think Myra, just as a matter of clarification, we, we know that Mr. Wilson talked to Drew.
Yes, we know.
And he, and Mr. Wilson feels that the size of his building will, that he intends to put there will fit with the required parking.
Well, he understands the limitations of that site.
Right, but we didn't go into the specifics, like exactly, you know, when you count the parking and stormwater detention and everything else that might come into play. But I assumed that they did, you know?
Well, we asked for representation of what the building was going to look like. But Mr. Wilson was aware of what the size of the lot is in the setbacks. So he was aware of the limitations on that lot and what would be required for a building.
Mr. Wilson has been involved in investing in other properties. So, you know, we, we assume that sometimes, just like the subway situation, an investor or a developer will have an intention to do something. And as they get further into it, they change their mind. And that's the nature of, of the private sector, you know, that, that happens. But he, he feels confident that, that he can do the development that he wants. That's what he told us at the, at the subcommittee.
Okay.
You want me to move on?
Yes.
Okay. Item number two, offer to, to purchase city's interest, North Morris Street, North Cherry Street. I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney because he's the one that has been working on this for a while. So, Mr. Smith, if you could get us up to date on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Park Sterling Bank has made an offer of $500 for the city's reversionary interest on the four lots on Cherry Street, just the four lots on Cherry Street. And if the full council recommends that, it will go for an upset bid process. And whoever the highest bidder is, the city will give a deed for our reversionary interest in the property. It's hard to value what a reversionary interest is. The deed says if the property is no longer used for a public purpose, the city can take it back. We haven't acted to take it back yet because no city department has told council that they would have a use for those four lots. The former Boys and Girls Club building is under separate ownership now. We do still have a reversionary interest on that lot. However, it is leased to Gaston Community Action and they maintain that that is a public purpose. And the city doesn't have any inclination to challenge that right now. So that, that lot is completely separate from this transaction. But the committee did recommend unanimously to put this $500 offer up for upset bid. There is Representative Park Sterling here tonight if you have any questions of the bank.
Questions?
And I make that in the form of a motion that we accept the $500 with upset bid process.
Any, any other discussion, questions? Okay, all in favor, please? Okay, it is unanimous.
Okay, thanks. Item number three, donation of property on East Maple Avenue and East Third. The city received a request to, to accept a donation of properly, of property... city received a request to, uh, to accept a donation of properly, of property located at East Maple. The four properties are in close proximity to Limeburger Park, staff advised there is no potential use for these properties, uh, staff did look at it to see if it could go into the greenway some way, somehow, uh, that was not the case, so the committee voted unanimously not to accept the offer of donation of the property at East Maple Avenue and East Third, and I put that in a form of a motion.
Okay, motion and second discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Okay. Item number five, uh, again, some donation of property at North Highland Street, uh, the property is in close proximity to the Irwin Recreation Center, the property is approximately point four acres, uh, staff advised there is no potential use for these, these properties either, uh, we did look at it and, um, there were some, uh, questions concerning the, uh, the, uh, topography of it, it was slopy and down, and it wasn't, it wasn't anything that could be used, uh, within the city's, uh, master plan. So I, the, uh, committee voted three to, uh, zero to not accept the donation of the property at North Highland Street, and I put that in a form of a motion.
Second here.
Okay, discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Uh, item number six, uh, was, um, the purchase of property, uh, at, uh, thirteen-twenty-seven North Broad Street, uh, the municipal operations center, this facility is the operational base for Public Works at Electric Water and Sewer and Stormwater Utilities, almost all developable area at the, uh, MOC is fully utilized by existing operations, and there is minimum room for future growth. The city obtained an appraisal, uh, for that property, and it is owned by Randy and Susan Bell, and, uh, they both are, uh, employees of the city, but, uh, they have expressed a desire to sell this property. Uh, the appraised value is, uh, the city obtained appraisal for the property and the va- the value is ninety thousand dollars. Funding is available for this property through the existing capital budget and would be split between water sewer and electric utility funds, and the staff recommended that the purchase of this property be approved. The committee, um, had some lengthy discussion in reference to the overall facility of the MOC, but it was, uh, voted unanimously to approve the purchase of the property at thirteen-twenty-seven North Broad Street for ninety thousand dollars, and I put that in a form of a motion.
Second.
Do you have any discussion?
Yes, sir. What are we going to use that property for?
Uh, the discussion that, that we had at the, uh, committee meeting was, uh, possibly for additional parking, and it is across the street from the current parking facility, but I'll flip if you would like to expand on that.
Mayor and council, uh, I would refer you to exhibit eight-twenty-eight, um, if you turn to that page, what you see in red on that is what the city current prop- currently owns, that's our operations center, and as you look at, uh, how we may expand in the future, really, from Boxwood North would be a key area for us, uh, we are already stressed at this point in time with parking, uh, as you, uh, look to the, to the, I say, the north, which, as you're looking at that drawing, is, is towards the bottom of the page, uh, severe topographic problems, uh, to expand parking in that area, but, uh, the area up off of Broad Street itself, we have no current uses as we sit here today, but just recognizing the future, protecting our interest, and knowing that the city will grow, um, we, we see that as a good investment, and certainly now, we do have some parking issues.
Question, Flip. Were we looking at the property on Boxwood Lane and North Broad, um, what is that, south of Boxwood there? Was that property for sale at one point?
Uh, it was actually put to auction about, uh, I'm going to say, a year, year and a half ago, we, this council did approve submitting a bid on that, we did, the, uh, sellers did not accept it, it wasn't an estate, uh, they recently, about two weeks ago, put that up for auction as well, we did not bid on that, we, again, we felt that the property north of Boxwood and west of Broad Street was much more important in our master plan, uh, so we did not bid on that, they did sell that property, um, while it, it, it could have been an investment for the city, we did not feel it was as important as that north of Boxwood.
So you feel this property that were, uh, for ninety thousand dollars from the Bells is, is worth it and we need it?
Well, we are certainly purchasing a structure on it that has little to no value to the city, but the underlying land is what is valuable, and again, if you look at, uh, we would in the future, as those other parcels become available, to again, kind of round out that complex we have up there, we would certainly come back to this council and suggest acquisition of those as those become available.
Thank you, sir.
Ron?
Yes, sir.
Flip, two questions. Number one, um, when, when you indicate, when we indicate parking, are we talking about some of our equipment, are we talking about employee parking, uh, customer parking?
Uh, primarily employee at this point in time, don't have a lot of customers at that facility, but employee parking is already stretched to the limit, we sometimes have to park on the road.
And what would we do with that, do we have any plans for what we might do with that structure?
Uh, the structure itself, uh, from a staff perspective, we certainly don't feel we should get into the rental business, uh, probably from a pure liability unless there's some other use that our staff would come up with, we'd, we'd just demolish it and, and again, utilize the property either for temporary parking or permanent.
And, and do you have any idea what that demo cost might be?
Uh, do not know, I know our typical, uh, some of our demo of houses through code enforcement, I'm going to say, uh, probably two to four, two to five thousand dollars, but that's purely a guess at this point.
Would that be handled in-house, or would we contract out that demolition?
Um, we have done both, we have not looked at that either way, a lot of times, if our forces are available, we do that in-house.
Thank you.
How is this property, Flip, presently zoned?
Uh, Mayor, I'll have to check on that, my guess is that whole area up there was residential, that goes back to the area south of Boxwood, it had limited use, uh, for what we may have, because there were some, actually, some neighborhood covenants on one of those parcels south of that, but probably residential and, yes, residential, says residential district, yes.
Okay.
That, that, again, from a parking standpoint, may have to come back before this body for re-zoning.
Yes, sir.
Flip, uh, the house, can it be, uh, given to the fire department for a controlled burn before it's wrecked?
That certainly, uh, may be a very good use for it, we'll be glad to look into that.
Just, oh.
Well, I just wanted to, to, to everyone to, I think, I found, to apologize, I think that my, I'm confused when I said appraisal, uh, that there is, that's where I read it, as opposed to the other little triangle, uh, because it does say there that this one, of course, has been appraised. Now, having said that, this is on residence, on a dead-end street, and its tax value is seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars, and, uh, the appraisal somehow or other got, somehow with some comps, got to ninety, and then this other one is bigger, on a major thoroughfare, weird shape, twenty-five thousand dollars, that's all. Any other questions of Mr. Bomberdier?
Just one, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, just one other concept, and that would be if, uh, there would be, I, I, I don't know the structure, I haven't seen the structure, the Bell's property, but if that's something that could possibly be moved, then that'd be another option, you could, you could potentially sell the property and, uh, sell the, you know, the actual building, and then have it moved off the property, might save us the cost of demolition, just another, another way to look at things.
Be glad to look into it.
All right, thank you.
Just as a matter of information, too, uh, I did mention that Randy and Susan Bell are, uh, in, uh, City of Gastonia employees, and, uh, on exhibit eight-dash-twenty-seven at the very bottom, it does state that the City of Gast- uh, this item has been cleared through the city legal staff to ensure that there are no problems or potential complications with them being, uh, city employees, so I just wanted to clarify that, okay?
Okay. Any other questions coming? Okay, well, there's been a motion.
Right.
And a second, and then we were under discussion, so now we'll vote, all in favor, all opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I skipped item number four, okay, on your sheet, uh, the, that was another donation of property, uh, the city had received a request to accept a donation of property at, uh, twenty-seven forty-nine South York Road, which is a twenty-three-point-three acre parcel adjacent to City on Property on Lion Street, due to the condit- to the condition and the topography of the property, staff feels it is limited to no value to the city, uh, and basically, the committee did not take any action on that, uh, what we asked the, uh, city to, staff to do was to file a report to the committee in, uh, six weeks, uh, to see if there, it would be something that, that could possibly turn into something, uh, of the, I think the city manager was going to talk with the county and see if there was anything there, but that's, that's basically, uh, just for information only at this point, and that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. That is item eight, facilities, uh, item nine is the, uh, is the citizen committee appointments needed for twenty, uh, fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and of course, that's the presentation, it says by the mayor and, and the council, and I believe that's the, well, it was on the last page or close to it. It is, there it is. The, uh, please note that, uh, all apartments are, are not by wards, uh, therefore, none are indicated, uh, ward apartments are noted, bold print, and it's got that there, terms expire six of fourteen, six-thirty of fourteen, end of this month. Uh, the Farmers Market Advisory Board, uh, two-year term, a vacant position, is there any names presented for that?
Uh, I don't have a name.
Uh-huh.
But I am going to inquire if there is someone on the Gastonia, uh, Rotary Club's Community Garden Committee.
Yeah.
That possibly could, uh, would have the time to serve on this committee, I will be researching that and get back with the, with the council next month.
Good idea. Okay, the next one's the Historic District Commission, a three-year term, it's vacant? Yes, sir.
I like to place a nomination, the name is Wayne John Pialik. There in the, uh, Brandon Mercer House, South Co- Crowe, he's in it, in Brookwood, historic district, and I passed a copy of his resume out to everyone, and I felt real fortunate that Mr. Pialik, John Pialik, was willing to do this, I'd like to read the first statement, that I was very impressed with, says, "I think it, it is vital for every historic district to protect integrity and history in the area. Those who choose to purchase a property located within a historic district should be willing to make a conscious decision, in effort to protect the house or building as well as the ground, strive to maintain its original features as much as possible. It is our responsibility as wards of these beautiful properties to make necessary repairs and updates, to keep these properties in pristine condition, not only for us, but for future generations. If I'm chosen to be on the Historic District Commission, I will do my very best work with others to help to do just that." And then he's got the rest of his, uh, resume, and I was very impressed with that, very fortunate, he was willing to serve, so I place his name in nomination.
Okay.
Second.
Oh, second.
You don't need to second, well, just, if there are no other nominations, is it saying the nomination be closed?
Yeah, are there any other, any other nominations for the Historic District Commission? Is there a motion to close?
Well, you can declare the nominations be closed.
Okay, any others at all? Okay. Well, I do declare that the nominations be closed and that, uh, Mr. Pialik, be appointed.
We, do we need a motion?
We need to vote.
You need to vote.
That's one.
All in favor? We can handle that. All opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, the, the final one is the, uh, this, this list is getting smaller, finally, I like that. Uh, the Planning Commission's a three-year term, Ward Five, position currently held by David Kaler, note, Mr. Kaler is interested in serving another term and his attendance is good. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I told you that I would like to make that, uh, nomination, the third, uh, Tuesday, the fifteenth of July, the Planning Commission's not meeting during the month of July, so whoever is appointed will not miss anything during the month of July, their first meet, their next meeting would be in August, so, uh, respect the request that we wait to do that, the, uh, the fifteenth, their second meeting in July, and I'll have a name at that time.
What we do, we ask, vote on that?
You don't have to vote on that if you don't want to, if there are no nominations, you just move forward and bring it back up on the meeting in July.
Well, are there nominations for this position? Okay, bring it back up in July then.
Thank you.
Okay, um, city attorneys, report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council, I do have a, uh, settlement agreement that I'd like to ask your approval for tonight, in April of, uh, two thousand thirteen, we had a, uh, storm water contractor who was out working in the area of West Second Avenue, he noticed a sewer leak, uh, city no, forces were notified, um, they did respond, and, um, we tried to get three quotes, but it was an emergency situation, and so the contract was awarded to Sanders, uh, Utilities, um, Sanders had to go on site, fix the sewer, and basically take over the project area, which involved also taking over the storm drain project, what they found was that a fiber optic cable had been installed along the street and had, had punctured the sewer, and, uh, the work by the fiber optic company, RST, appeared to have taken place in two thousand eleven, so it had been about, about two years. Their subcontractor, who actually did the work, was called D and B Communications, the total amount of the work, both the original storm drain work that was going on to begin with, as well as fixing the sewer, came to a hundred fifteen thousand, we tendered that to, uh, D and B's insurer, and we have dickered with them for, uh, about half a year over that, they originally offered eighty-seven thousand, they are now at ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, obviously, they don't want to be at six figures, uh, we kept going back saying we needed to be at six figures, uh, so allegedly, this is the, is their final offer, again, we haven't had a whole lot of staff time in this yet, if we had to go to trial, we would have to depose a lot of people, we'd have to have an expert witness, this sewer line was very old, uh, pre-nineteen thirty-five, before we even had records, so, you know, cost of repair is some indication of your damages, but it's not the definitive, uh, thing, fair market value of what was lost is, is actually the standard, and, uh, the sewer was very old, and we would have had to replace it at some point anyway, so they, they would have that argument, and again, uh, we had the storm drain work that was kind of folded into there, so, uh, with all those things considered, uh, this is from the engineering department, they do recommend that we, uh, we move forward with the settlement, I certainly recommend it as well, and if council approves it, it would be to settle for ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars and have the city manager execute the appropriate documents to resolve the claim, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and Rusty's here as well.
Yes, sir.
Ash, is, is the company or their subcontractor still doing work in our city?
Not right now that we know of, and if they do, they are supposed to pull an encroachment permit to work in the right of way, so the engineering can see what they're doing and approve their plans, I think that's part of the problem here, is in two thousand eleven, they came out here without telling anybody and put this fiber optic cable in, unfortunately, that continues to happen, and we try to police that as best we can.
I, I guess I would, what I would want is to make, uh, as certain as possible, that we scrutinize these two particular companies, if you will, if they go to do additional work in our city at a later time, because I think that we've seen a benchmark of maybe what, what we might, it might be an issue there. Thank you.
Yes.
Ash, it's what, fifteen thousand five hundred dollars shy of what, what it should be? be?
There, there's an argument about what it should be, because the storm drain work was, we were doing that anyway, and it's a nineteen thirty-five sewer line that was probably in really bad shape to begin with, and we would've had to replace it at some point anyway.
So, but the thing is fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars difference here. And we haven't put any legal, legal beagles on it or anything?
Haven't had to pull engineering out and away from what they're doing and start putting together stuff and getting ready to testify and all those kind of things. So our staff time and their staff time.
They'll give us ninety-nine thousand?
Five hundred dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? It is you now.
Thank you. And just want to remind everybody, Saturday is the longest day, the Alzheimer's Association Awareness Day, and everybody's encouraged to wear purple. So thank you, Mr. Kimball, for remembering to have yours on tonight for our council meeting. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City manager, Mr. Bond?
Mayor, council, since this is our last meeting before Fourth of July, and I think Councilman Pierceall would normally address this issue, we're having our celebration of Gastonia on Fourth of July. It starts at eleven o'clock, and anybody that wants to get some information can just Google, we are now red, what's that?
Red, white.
Red, white, southern.
White and southern. So last year was red, white, and blue, and this is to emphasize what's special about being southern. Now, some of the things that are going on, they're gonna have the political dunking booths, you know, which is always popular, the hot dog eating, pie eating, carnival rides, music. Of course, the fireworks at nine o'clock, but it's all day long, starts at eleven o'clock. Some of our downtown merchants will be open. And so we encourage all of the customers and, or all our citizens in the city and around and surrounding areas to come to Gastonia and have a wonderful Fourth of July event that starts at eleven o'clock in the afternoon and runs all the way until nine o'clock in the evening with fireworks.
Okay, Ford?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Mr. Bond if they could have on the schedule about what time did they have the hot dog eating contest, what time did they have the pie eating contest we put on our website, so the people would know what time, if they wanted to watch those particular things, what time to be there. If they could post that on our website, those different specific times, I would appreciate it.
And also add to that, you know, what politicians are gonna be in the dunking booth, because I'm sure, you know, some people like to throw some baseballs at them, like, I know I'm gonna be in there, and I'm sure Tom Keger will be there with a ton of money.
And there's a big bake-off, too, which was really successful last year. I think they're gonna expand it, and it's actually gonna be in the conference center. And they're gonna have all sorts of bakery products, which people can sample. It's gonna, that, that should be a lot of fun as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is that it? Your report? Okay. City council reports, Ms. Gregg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have anything, but I just wanted to say that the staff has started the second phase of the Optimus Park on Vance. They're moving right along. It is, you can, you can go down Second Avenue, and you can look over there, and you, you can see the park from Second Avenue now. So if you get a chance to go by there, certainly go by there and see what they're doing. It's a, it's quite a undertaking because of the ravine that's there, but they, they're really working hard, and I appreciate everybody's involvement in it from the staff level. And I hope everybody has a safe Fourth of July and join us downtown. We'll be there. Thank you.
Kind of unusually to have a report.
It is, it is. With a, with a bow tie like yours, go ahead.
But anyway, Councilman Pierceall was at the A R C celebrity ball game, and I was there also. They asked me to throw out the first pitch. All it is, is just an underlined handed pitch at Aloniger. And we had a lot of fun, and it was real good participation. Some of the Grizzlies were involved with that, and we had a real good time out there. It's a good cause, and I sponsored one of the Grizzlies in the home run contest, but he didn't win. But one of the sheriffs guys did pretty good, and another gentleman did pretty good. So I think it was real good, real successful, and I would encourage everyone maybe next year to go out and participate. Because you, my wife and I both played in that years and years, probably at least ten years. The biggest staff park, it was later than today. It was pretty hot out there. So that's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question. The surplus property that we're gonna be selling, that's on W W W gov, is that it? I was reading in the paper today. It's a website. Do you know what it was, Flip?
Where they give the
Yeah, they have the
Govdeals, govdeals.com. Now, I don't know if the, the article in the paper is gonna be on Govdeals. I think the article talked about the fact that we often, purchasing often uses govdeals.com, but this is an upcoming auction, I believe, that's gonna be physically here in the city. It's not gonna be on Govdeals.
Oh, it's not gonna be on Govdeals, so it's gonna be physically here in the city?
It's gonna be a physical auction.
Out at North Broad or where?
Mayor and council, actually, I think the government could, or surplus could, on Govdeals, they have a combination auction, a lot of that good.
Govdeals.
So it is gonna be on Gov, W W W dot govdeals?
I thought we were having a physical auction is the point of the article.
Yes, I thought we were. We act, we actually do both. We, we have auctions and we do Govdeals. So what we'll do is clarify and send a notice out to the council and also to the public as to what we're doing. And I'll, we'll double check that article and make sure that all that information is, is widely disseminated.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. The other thing is, I, I'd sent out an email to the council people regarding the Whitewater Center, a letter speaking to them regarding the board of directors and having somebody sit on there from the city council. I received great feedback from Councilman Kimball, who said that we need to send a letter like that to one of our committees. And also, Dr. Curlin, Councilman Curlin said that we need to send it to Ash and have some legal leas put on it, so it looks, dress it up nicer. And I think they're great ideas. I think that's something that we need to look at, and I don't know what committee that would go to. Ed, Ash, anybody? Facilities or?
Jim, what you might wanna think about is before, and my, my thought, before we shift it to a committee, Ash, you may wanna do some fact finding to see what the bylaws are of, of that group and how specifically that might be accomplished. And then with the fact finding you, you are able to accomplish within our, you know, sort of length of time, that might guide us.
Okay. The other thing is, I found out also on the E O C, the Economic Council, what is it? The economic, Development Council, Economic Development Council? Currently, Mayor Pro Temp Craig sits on there, and she sits on it, but doesn't have, we don't have any voting rights as a city of Gastonia. And I think we need to have another letter go out to that board of directors and let them know that we would like to have voting rights, since we are the ones that are okaying a lot of the deals that go down within the city itself. I mean, we should have a voice on there voting on whether, whether or not. So I think we need to look at that as well. I do have something from Electricities, and it just gives you an idea that we need to maybe send this out to our constituents, to let them know that the tax rate is, the tax rate's going above for everybody. It's going from three percent to seven percent. And that's not just in Gastonia. That's in Belmont, that's in Apex, that's in Raleigh, that's, every single city is getting an increase of four percent, of seven percent for their taxes on their electricity. I just think we need to, I pulled this off of the Electricities website, and we need to put something like that in our blurb. Anything on that, Flip?
Certainly, mayor and council, in, in all our June electric bills, we have a short statement on there that kind of introduces that topic of the increase in the sales tax and the changes in the electric. And then we encourage our customers, for any questions, to go to the city's website where we explain it in much more detail. And that's already existing on our website as we're here tonight.
The other thing is, the Dream Center is having a barbecue fundraiser tonight. I missed it, shucks. And, let me see. Last Tuesday, I went to, on June tenth, went to the least of these ribbon cutting. That was my first ribbon cutting ceremony, which was nice. No, my second, 'cause I was at the one for the hospital. And, let me see. One of the things I wanted to bring attention of everybody, and this is for Chief Welsh and his, his guys, the Gazette ran a article in the paper regarding a floor collapsing for a Gastonia fire, you know, fire that took place in the house. The fire department avoided serious accident. I attribute that to Chief Welsh's ability to allow his men to have good training for men and women of the fire department, because they take their time with their training seriously, chief. And it, it showed. It showed itself by their actions and precaution that they had taken, that they had taken, because it could've saved someone's life, or at least a major injury. I mean, look at the, the floor of that thing collapsed for this house. And I just wanna salute our brave men and women of our fire department and just say, way to go, chief. The only thing is, the paper didn't say what fire company responded, what engine companies responded to that. So it really didn't give any credit to anybody. It just said, you know, Gastonia Fire Department. Who's that? And do you know the firefighters that realized that there was something going on there?
Yes, sir. It, it was Chief Foy and Chief Thomas's shift. And it was, when we have a fire, the station's surrounding area, they, they converge on the area. And that was predominantly, or that was in Station Six's district. So Six was the first engine in. Ladder Four would've been there, Engine Four would've been there, and Engine Two would've been there. And Rescue One comes from across town as our rapid intervention team. And when the floor collapsed, we had crews inside the house, right in that bedroom area, and we had crews underneath that bedroom. Fire started underneath, that's why it collapsed. It's lightweight trusses. And a mayday is when we have a firefighter down or trapped or unaccounted for. So they called a mayday, which enacted that rapid intervention team from Rescue One, and they came around. Luckily, the crew underneath got out just as the collapse was happening, because one of the firefighters inside, Michael Carpenter, recognized the floor sagging in the master bedroom. And what the picture, what you don't realize in the picture is when it sagged in, all the bedroom furniture also slid right in like a funnel. So it was a close call, but they came out fine. No one was injured.
Great.
That's excellent, chief. Thanks. I appreciate that. And that is it, my, my report, sir.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Curlin?
Just one thing. At our last meeting, we, we took a vote and directed staff towards the repeal of the park and recreation fee, a payment in lieu of, for additional development. And I was, I know at that time, it was the intention of the resolution or the motion at the time to bring this back to council for repeal of that ordinance in its entirety. What I was wondering is if there's enough interest on council's part to look at that in a little bit more revised fashion with, again, similar to what the staff had recommended as a, say, a fixed fee of three hundred dollars or, or some amount that would allow the city to continue to gain some recreational fees. That would put less stress on our system. As you're aware, from Mr. Dellinger's report, when we were going through our master plan of how much the needs are for recreation in the community, and to lose those fees in its entirety is gonna put more stress, again, on parks and rec and look towards either increasing taxes at a later point in time. But I know the, the concept was, well, it's broken, and, and we need to, we need to, you know, kill it before anything further goes on. But I thought in the sake of efficiency and really making something happen in a logical fashion, that maybe council would consider an alternate draft of that ordinance and to change it more towards a fixed fee and, again, along the lines of what staff had recommended. If there's interest in a straw vote this evening, that we could look at that at the same time as the repeal of the ordinance in its entirety, then we could direct staff to do that, you know, at this point. If, if there's not enough interest, then obviously, we don't wanna waste the staff's time. But, you know, I, I felt it was another opportunity, and I thought we had just kinda gone too far one way. And I think there was some interest that we wanted to find some middle ground, and this might be a way to do that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I would just respond to that, that it would, I think it would be at least something that we could continue to look at. And the, because there is activity going on now in building, and our, my concern is, are we leaving money on the table right now because it has been repealed? Or take it back, I mean, take staff's recommendation and put a cap on it. So I would certainly be in favor of doing something like that. Councilman Curlin?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Curlin, I concur with Mayor Pro Temp Craig as well. You know, just basing on my own family, you know, young family moving into a new subdivision, we tended to utilize Martha Rivers a whole bunch. Now my kids are grown and gone. My wife and I really don't go down there all that much. And I think that new developments coming in with new families, they're the ones that are gonna be utilizing the parks more so than, you know, my wife and I would probably be looking for a, you know, patio home or something. But, yeah, I, I think that would be a great idea to have two of them to look at at the same time.
Anything else?
I do, too.
Mr. Mayor, we can have an option A and an option B in the planning commission's agenda packet, as well as the council's packet, because it won't go to planning commission until August, I don't think, and it'll be coming to you in September. So we'll have an option A, which would be Councilman Pierceall's motion to repeal it, and then an option B, which would be the
The staff's recommendation.
The staff's recommendation that Councilman Curlin, we can do that.
All right.
All right?
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. And that's all I have.
Several items. Ed, number one, we were looking at, we had during our storm, we had a breakdown of a lot of our phone-in numbers were not functioning properly. If I recall correctly, we were going to deal with Windstream on making sure that that situation was not replicated when we needed, candidly, it was during a major storm event, and the system, I think, went down to two or three phone lines. Where do we stand with that? I, I know that we were going to do some fact finding to ensure that they brought their standard up as far as emergent service.
Tom Carpenter is here to speak to that. He's been working on. Yes, councilman. We have worked with Windstream extensively since the incident happened in February. We actually had two incidents. We had another one that happened on April the eighteenth. On, in the February incident, we lost all but a third of our capacity for phone lines. It was due, I believe, in, in part to a mix-up that occurred back in August. It had to do with our VoIP cutover from our twenty-year-old phone system, and the representative from Windstream simply did not do her job. So the maintenance records were not correct when we had the outage. We still do not know what, what the outage was. We, we just had to agree to disagree with Windstream. We finally reached the escalation support team. We, we filed an official grievance through legal. We finally reached the executive escalation team. We finally got response back, and measures have been put in place that I believe should mitigate any sort of incident that may happen in the future. It would definitely speed It, it would definitely speed up the process, so to speak, of getting the problem fixed. We have our records, our records have been straightened out, they have been verified. We have three escalated, escalation points now, in addition to the standard support numbers, and we have been given a new account representative. My recommendation to the city manager about two or, two weeks ago, I believe, was to continue to do business with Windstream at this point. They did not view our incident as being one of a breach of contract, so we, we would have to go to court and, and fight if, if we chose not to continue to do business with them. And we have, just short of two years left on our contract.
Okay, thank you. You have a higher comfort level with them now?
I, I won't say that. I, I really, I really am disappointed in the service they provided us, I really am disappointed in the response, and, and the lack of response that we got back, but I, I'm just looking at this as, as a, a business decision for the city solely, and, and I, and I feel like that, that it isn't the best, the city's best interest just to continue on. Our other options are all more expensive, I can't guarantee that any of them will be any better if we have an, an incident in the future. And our contract, we do, we do business with, with Windstream on the phone side and the data side. Our contract is up on the data side, and we are going to go with another vendor, and we will certainly pursue other opportunities when this contract is up, and just short of two years.
Thank you. Second item, thank you, Todd. Second item, Rusty, I had a few calls, and we discussed this prior, just for the rest of the council, we had a couple of, couple entities on Tittman Road that we were having to go through some processes to get, to try and get that resolved. Where do we stand on that?
There, there are two outstanding properties that we have not closed on yet, but we do anticipate signature from those organizations. One is a church, and that church board has agreed to the, to where we're gonna resolve that. The other was an individual property owner, and Mr. Caldwell went out and spoke with him several more times, and he got the letter of the action that council took, and, and he is now settling with us on that, so.
Great.
We've gotta get with our legal staff and finalize those items, but it, it looks like we will not actually be going to court with any of the property owners on Tittman Road.
Excellent, thank you. Lastly, Chief, I believe that, I know that I've been working with Captain Britt, and I think he's gonna have all of the personnel available for the July fifteenth meeting from the SWAT competition, so that we can properly recognize those officers and how well they did. I know he's trying to work with some schedules to see if we can get as many here as possible?
Yes, I spoke with him last week about that, and he is working to get everything lined up for you.
Thank you, very good. And Councilman McEachran, you seem to have a lot of interest in both the hot dog eating and the pie eating. Are, are you anticipating being a contestant?
Absolutely not.
Okay, that's my report, thank you.
All right, you have one question, Mr. Bunns?
Ed, just one question, and that is, school's out, the pool up at Irwin Center is down still, and are we doing anything with buses, trying to get kids over to Leinberger Park from the Highland area?
Yes, it's my understanding that our recreation department's working to be able to transport children.
That might be me. I can't hear anybody.
Here, is that's better?
So, please.
You know, what I think has happened is the battery died.
I think so.
Yes, our recreation department's working with, with children that want to be able to be transported, are able to be transported over to Leinberger Park to be able to swim there, and we have the necessary transportation to move them back and forth. They're also trying to get the pool fixed, too. I mean, that, that's high priority, to get the Irwin Center pool fixed, I mean, you know, that, we're also trying to do that, but we, we have that ability to, to move the students back and, or the children back and forth.
Excellent, thank you.
Oh, I apologize, I wasn't here when that was discussed. Is, how, how far away is the pool from being open?
You know, Chuck's estimate was, you know, there, there's complications, because it's an old pool, and, and the problems that, when they were going in to fix it, got a little worse than they thought. So, I, I think what he told me, that it's still a couple of weeks, two or three weeks away until we're finished, but it's a high priority, we're trying to get that done absolutely as quickly as possible.
Okay. Thank you, I, there's only, we can end on a, certainly, a good note, I think, the seventh of June, well, and the twelfth of June, well, both were, me, I was at the conference center, the Thursday, the twelfth, it was the, this is very interesting, this North State Law Enforcement Association, sixty-two, probably, of course, primarily retirees and exist, and the, the fellow going out is State Chairman, is, was former county officer that just retired, lives in Dallas, his name is Bratton, and I said, now, let's see, and we started reminiscing a little bit there, I said, Eddie Bratton, he's, that's my uncle, my favorite uncle, who used to be, of course, forever, city policeman. But they were here by the carloads, followed the state. They were, they've been existent sixty-two years, this is the first time they've ever had this meeting in Gastonia, and it was a four-day meeting, and so, and Pearlburg Floyd was the speaker, did a marvelous job. But the room, it was just a big, big crowd, and of course, several nights before the nineteenth, well, another class of Ashley, a little bit younger than they asked me to welcome, and they, they, they were old-looking, too, for, but anyway, some came from everywhere, and so they were just thrilled in the conference center, and everything was good, I think they liked it. So, that's, that's two good stories, and so did the association to the ball. Okay, if there's, it is now eight fifteen, and if there's nothing else at the council, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Stand up. Stand up.
Yeah, my, my battery died.